We'll do it the way you come here, okay? The flag is ready.
I'm sorry, well, alright, let's hand it up.
Let's get it done.
Let's get it done. Alright, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Motion approved, amendments from February thirteenth, regular meeting.
I like motion approved, amendments.
Motion approved, February fourteenth, meeting of the trustee fire department.
Second.
Motion approved, the March docket and Alliance docket.
Were there any questions on the claims or the docket? And I also have your form to acknowledge that you have received the report.
Sorry, does all this in front of me?
Yeah, she first slipped something.
Colonel Blake.
Yeah, I'm Colonel Blake.
Yeah, I just saw that episode.
Alright, here we go. Before we get completely started, Josh, do you want to introduce yourself?
No, I just came to say hi. I'm Josh Flute, I'm president of the county council and just here to try to mend fences and cooperate and see where we can be helpful.
Cool. Thanks for coming. I appreciate you coming. We're the board of reports, department reports. Jerry, what you got?
Okay, uh... The other day, I was looking at the dump truck over and happened to notice it'd been making or plowed odd or chattered the plow itself and I got to look through it real close and further investigation discovered that it's, uh... the torsion bars on the front of the plow is not bringing the plow back up, it's laying over, uh... and I called about, see what would cost to replace them if I done it and they told me it would be approximately $1,250 to replace the torsion bars. That would just for the parts. Uh, I think I'm capable of probably tearing it apart and putting it back together myself, or at least I believe I am. That's if we don't discover anything else in there that's unaware of. I've never had one of them apart, so it looks like it's gonna be pretty simple to pull apart. So, uh, if you guys would like me to replace that or if you want to sit and think about it, I'm guessing I probably won't need it the rest of the year, or at least first part of the year.
Now, when you looked at it?
I did, I did too. Have you seen it? It's stuck like that, it'll spring back up, but it's about 45.
How old is that? Four, 15 years?
We got it same time in the truck, so it should be around the 2007. So, I don't know, I don't even know what it's worth, whether it's worth putting it back into it or not, or, you know, I mean, that's up to you guys. I mean, like I said, you can, I don't think I'm gonna need it the rest of, rest of the spring.
I hope not. I hope we're done with it.
I hope so. So, uh, that's something to think about. Then, uh... Mosquito spray will be coming up. Uh, we're getting low on our, uh... I know.
You can't talk about mosquito spray the same way.
Yeah, but, uh, we're getting low on our chemical for our sprayer, for UOV machine. If we buy it through the same company that we normally do, they always drop the price, they always eliminate the price on the particle size testing every year when we go to the seminars, uh, which is usually $285 to have it tested once a year. I don't know what you guys want to do as far as ordering it. If I order before Friday, they will waive shipping. Uh, it's quite expensive. If I buy a case, which is five gallons, it's $235 a case. If I go eight cases, I can get it for $235 a case, or, I mean, yeah, wait a minute, I gave you the wrong price, $245 a case. It's $235 if I go for eight cases or more. Uh, I can get a 55 gallon drum if you'd like, that's a $24.83.
How much do we normally go through?
I've had that 55 gallon drum up for five years and it's getting low.
Are you and Dan both certified to spray it now?
I'm not anymore.
So, you have to take training?
We had a couple of spring storms that I couldn't make it to, so I lost my license last fall, or in January. Dan's got his, so I figured until if I, something happens, I can always run back in and retest. But I'm planning on sending him to the gas city, I believe it's May the 21st, to the seminar there, and we'll get the machine calibrated at that time, which is required once a year. Uh, so, you guys, uh, let me know what you want to do. If you do, let me know before Friday, I can...
What do you recommend?
It doesn't matter either way. I mean, it does, it seems like it goes up a little bit every year. It hasn't went up considerably in the last five years, because I remember it was over $2,000 five or six years ago when I ordered it.
Would two cases get you through the summer?
That'd be 10 gallons, possibly. It'd be close.
But the next break's eight gallons, right?
Yeah. I generally go through, uh, two and a half gallons, maybe three every time I spray. So, it's, it's expensive.
Three cases would get you through for sure?
Yeah, plus what I've got in, I would say it would.
I'll make a motion, we buy three cases?
Okay, uh, alright. Uh, I went ahead and got on the state bid for salt for, for 2019, 2020 here, for, uh... so, I put in for 30 tons of salt, so we'll see what price comes up with when they bid on it and then come back to us and tell us what the price will be. And then, we, uh, reapplied for MPDS permit a while back. Uh, we've got the draft back, it looks like it's gonna, permit draft, looks like it'll be the same as has been for the last five years, so we won't have any changes on that. That's all I've got.
Alright, I got, uh, we had a discussion last time on if they could get an ordinance to protect the underground infrastructure. Remember talking about that when she come up with something, I guess, but...
Well, I talked to Jill Reddick, what she told me to do is to check those other towns. So, I talked with Jill Reddick and she said that they have nothing in Florida. She said that any contractor or crew cutter, or anybody that's gonna do any digging, has to register with the town, then she said they just watch it to make sure. But, I mean, I think we could draft an ordinance, I just need to know what exactly you want in, what exactly Jerry wants in the ordinance.
Let me check with City Delphi and see what they have. I know they have something they have to stop in and register, they're supposed to.
Okay. You look and see what they've got and see if they have a copy of it.
Maybe I'll get a copy of it or something.
Okay.
If you'll give something to me, then that gives me something going, but, uh, Florida, Florida doesn't have one, so...
Or at least get a copy of it, see whether, what we can use, you know, give us an idea of what, or, you know, give us some other ideas.
What Jill Reddick said is that they, they keep pretty close watch on it, and I thought, well, you know, okay, but maybe you're not gonna do that.
They don't have any, they don't have any backbone to...
Exactly. Yeah, can, can we tell them you can't do that and...
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Jerry? Nothing else?
That's it, that's it.
Alright, Jill, we're up to you.
Alright. We had 18 calls for service, three assisting another agency, sent out an ordinance violation notice, um, that issue has been resolved for now, two animal complaints, and then four traffic complaints.
You're gonna start getting busier.
I know. With the ordinance.
It's alright. What else we got? Sign-in sheet, sheet of entry for that?
And the agreement that we have with the other local agent, law enforcement agencies, there's a line in there that the ones that's using the shooting range are to sign a sign-in sheet at the range, but there's really no protected area to put the sheet. So, Jill and I have been talking about maybe seeing if dispatch would keep record, when anybody goes down to the shooting range, they have to notify dispatch where we are. So, it is tracked that way.
If we go as a group from different agencies, we sign a form to get credit for training that we, each individual signs.
They should call in and let us know ahead of time.
Yeah, that's, that's separate though, this is the signing in that they aren't there.
It's all done, except for that number seven, what we had to do about the sign-in sheet, that's, otherwise it's all, all...
And it's, I mean, anytime we have any training, we sign a sheet down there, um, that we're there and...
Did you have a chance to ask dispatch if they would be willing to track it, or do we need to?
I haven't had a chance to.
Is this a permanent record that they keep anyway, that it would be something that could...
I mean, it would probably be on their CAD system if somebody marks out that they're out of the range or the signal 18, which is, you know, firearm range. But we do, like I said, we do have a sign-in sheet before we even do any firearm training that we have to sign.
And does anybody go down there to use it just for training or leisurely use as law enforcement? That's not with a trainer? Are they ever down there by themselves if they want to be notifying somebody?
It'd be hard for her to really say that.
Yeah, because I've not, I mean, I don't know if there's officers on their own time, you mean, that go down there?
I've had officers contact me about going down there and then I always let Jerry know, but I don't know if they're down there by themselves.
I don't have a problem with that, I mean, I don't know what, you know, they should know what they're gonna begin with, I mean, they're up here walking around carrying a gun. The only thing I need to know, well, really, I mean, honestly, I mean, the only thing I'd like to know is if they're gonna go back here, you know, if they let us know, you know, a day ahead of time if possible, you know, and I understand they'll have days it's screened out. The only thing that we do, the only times we have problems is if we're back or trying to work and something happens and then they show up just off the blue. And if we're not, like I said, if we're not doing anything, I don't care if they call me and, "Hey, you guys doing anything back here?" "No." "Well, you might be going back there in the next few minutes?" "No, go ahead, I don't care about it." That's not a problem.
The only issue would be our insurance. If it says they have to have a trainer, I don't know how our insurance states.
Well, I think it's important to have a sign-in sheet so that you know time in and time out, you know, you never can tell.
We could take care of that through dispatch, I think, if we had a proof.
Who's where a certain time.
But, I mean, if, if an officer goes down there just to practice and didn't have a trainer, I mean, as long as Jerry knows, I think it's fair, but, I mean, if our insurance says they have to have a trainer before they go down there...
I don't think our insurance specifies that. The whole thing, though, is...
Can you have them leave something, a paper that they, that they can put in the office even if they're closed in the night closet?
You can always drop a note in there.
I mean, it's...
We should have some kind of standard way to notify you, though.
How many training offices is there, Jill?
Many firearms instructors?
Yeah.
I think Delphi City has one and County has one.
Yeah.
Laramore was one, but he retired, so...
Yeah, well, I'm getting that, it's, if they need an instructor with them, couldn't we give the sign-in sheet to the two instructors and that not be part of it?
Well, I don't think we have an issue with an organized training session. It would be, I don't, yeah, an individual or something just for the moment type, that's what we don't have.
Just the notification, whether it's through me or to get ahold of Jerry, that somebody's wanting to use it. And I can bring that up at the next, um, monthly law enforcement meeting, if anybody's gonna use a range on their own or with somebody else, and you at least let me know so I can get ahold of Jerry to let them know, at least, what, 24 hour notice?
Have you had anybody come down there without knowing? I mean, you used to have a lot, but you haven't like last year.
No.
Spencer called me and a couple times, Spencer contacted me and, I don't know, a couple others before I had.
That, yeah, I, but it hasn't happened for quite a while.
Yeah, I... We have any problem since we started this whole new signing, we got all the townships and everything, Burlington now signed the thing, we haven't had an issue, have we?
Nothing, I'm aware of.
I think so. Can you just bring it up at the meeting and just...
Why does that mean?
It's just a local law enforcement meeting we have, once a month. Mostly police chiefs and some of the officers show up. We just go over law enforcement.
You might just tell them we haven't had any issues, but just to reiterate that to contact here.
Or they're gonna see you.
So, if she don't have anything else?
Done.
We're done with her. No more marshal. We're up to you, clerk.
Okay. Uh, first resolution I have is 2019C, it's an additional appropriation, $13,500. I forgot to put that in the budget and maybe a day for the grant administrator, so that's something we can get through to him, too.
I'll make a motion, we pass resolution 2019C for additional appropriation of $13,500.
We have plenty of...
Second.
Who wants to sign those, or would you?
They send her the... Yeah, that's the right one. The next resolution I have is 2019D, that's establishing, um, a checking account for water, stormwater, drainage and stormwater construction grant accounts. And that's just saying, I can set those accounts up.
I'll make a motion, we pass resolution 2019D authorizing to establish bank accounts.
Second.
I'm gonna have to sign your deal.
The next one I have is ordinance 2019-1, that's establishing a water savings account. We have, last year, end of, very beginning of 18, we paid off our loan. Uh, we're putting money aside now in water for any major projects that can come along. This is allowing that account to be set up and establishing the fund.
I'll make a motion, ordinance 2019-1 establishing a water savings account.
Second.
Okay, the next thing I have is ordinance 2019-2, this is repealing and replacing 2010-1. Occasionally, we have a small balance left in a customer's account, uh, by this ordinance, if it is $5 or less and the customer has moved, not leaving us a forwarded address, we can deposit that balance of his deposit back into water operating. And the new part that I added was if the account is, has a balance of a dollar or less, whether we know where they moved or not, we'll just move that money back over to operating. We do have three that I would be doing, the most is 67 cents, but 55 cents for a state, you know?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, ordinance 2019-2 repealing and replacing ordinance 2010-1.
Second.
We got our contract back, signed from the state for the street grant, but it's not completely signed by everybody at the state. I've got a call out to make sure it is completed and come back to us by mistake. If I get a call back and it is completed, I'd like a motion for Brent to be able to go ahead and sign that, lose contracts.
I'll make a motion that Brent can sign the contracts.
It's already been, you've done the...
Yeah.
Everything. It's just a formality, but I'd like that motion.
Second.
The next thing I have is met with Jerry White and Amy Millar Cornerstone Grant Management to talk about a grant for the Med Center. We talked last time about having to do a townwide income survey. The Med Center services more than just the citizens of count, the town. A countywide income survey probably would not work. County low moderate income is around maybe 34, 35 percent, we needed to be at 51. No way we could reach that using a countywide. The suggestion was made to do a clientele intake survey, um, I think you might have a copy of it in your paperwork.
She was gonna come over.
I, I talked to Linda Stapleton, she's taken the idea to Memorial Hospital, the clientele, when they come in, every time they come in, they just fill this out and tell us a new visit, and we're making difference if it's different people or not. We would need to collect these for six months and every month, they would bring them over to me. We do a calculation on whether we're at the 51 percent or not. If we're not, we're, it's over, because we have to have that to get the grant. Um, if they are, then your next question is going to be, do you still want to go after this grant if they consistently go over the 51 percent, if their clientele changes? I know the county has looked at doing, where they do have their medical facility. If Memorial were to bid on it and get it, it would probably put them over the 51 percent. If we consistently go over the 51 percent, the town would be liable for that, for the grant. So, that means if we get a $400,000 grant, we'd have to pay the $400,000 back to the state. So, I, you know, it's up to you, do you want to find out whether we can even make it or not?
What's the duration on the grant? How many years?
Five years. We'd have to do the income surveys for five years, they bring them over to the office, we'd have to keep a spreadsheet, something we, on the intake, you know, that they've beaten requirements.
I think we get, we need to meet with Memorial Hospital, the representatives, and we need to, and they need to share in that decision-making.
Okay.
Because I don't want to put, I don't feel like we should take the town at risk without them having some responsibility. If they make a business decision to do something like that...
Okay. So, you, do you want to contact them, or you want me to try to contact them?
If you would, I appreciate it. I mean, it's up to these guys, but...
No, I don't want to put the town 100% on the line with that. I'd like to get them involved, too.
Well, I mean, we're, we're basically basing our grant and our decision on what's current, but if they make a business decision, that could affect the town, and $400,000 is a lot of money for town.
Yeah. Well, and, uh, when I spoke with Jerry White, he asked how much we thought we'd need, and I just threw out the number three to 400,000.
Yeah, it's a ballpark, I mean, just...
And we need to match it 20 percent to really have a fighting chance.
Yeah, I just think we need to make sure that we protect ourselves, and that, at their, that they have some skin in the game.
Okay, I'll give them a call. Steve Pearson dropped off a proposal for doing mowing again this year. He would do the water tower property at $25 a week, that includes trimming the weeds. He'd also do the Vicentino garden, no extra cost.
$25 for what was that again?
The water tower lot, per week.
And the garden, too, I guess.
Did he mow it every week, or?
Pretty much.
I haven't... What was it last year, about the same price?
I think it was, yeah, I don't think it went up any.
So, I'm good with it.
Yeah, $25 for that and this up here.
You alright with it, Andy?
Oh, yeah.
I make a motion that...
What do you mean?
Second. Accept the contract presented?
Okay. Um, okay, in your packets of paper, you've got some pages on the internal controls. There were a couple slight changes in wording that's in there that I've made notes on so you know what it is. Um, it's mainly because we went from the three checking accounts into the one, just changing some of the words, but everything remains the same on how we do things, but I just want you to be aware of that. Um, I also need a motion to cancel the Visa credit card and then stop using the community card that has come in, but we're going to wait to cancel the Visa card because we do have points against the Visa card.
I'll make a motion, I can cancel the Visa card.
Second.
And of course, uh, the ordinance 2009-1 that regulates how we use credit cards would apply to the community card. And you have a copy of that ordinance?
There's no changes to it, or?
No, everything would remain the same. All the same. That's for right now. Thank you.
Old business, Eric wants a plan for the EDC.
I have somebody called me, but they don't live in the township.
Are they supposed to? I mean, does it matter?
It doesn't matter, but if they represent camp, then it's nice.
I told them that we have two people that live in the township, we would desire somebody to live in town, this is kind of our, what we're looking for, but I told them if we don't find someone, I'd bring it up before you guys. Do you have anybody approach you, or?
I haven't had anyone approach me, no.
Do we want to... Was that a little bit more?
That's why, my thought is...
I was kind of looking to see what happens. Yeah, I thought maybe that would be talked about tonight, but nobody showed it. I'm with you on that one, Doc.
We'll put it on town's website.
When's our, when's our contract expire?
Actually, I, um...
When they start off with action?
Actually, I thought it was June.
July 15, the 13th.
And what's it stated if we... We have to get so much notice, I'm sure if we do any...
If we withdraw?
Well, is there notice if we even want to make changes? In the dollar amount?
Yes, you do. Of course, it has to be agreed upon in writing for cooperation. It doesn't say. To terminate it, um... Oh, when you written notice?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not generally in favor of termination of...
No.
Contract, but I think there's some changes that need to be made.
So, do you want to have a meeting with them, or do you want to, if you want changes? Or table?
I'd like to have a meeting with our representatives and see what their thoughts are.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know I, the one left.
So, you want to meet with Julia and Annie?
I mean, that's my desire, if the other guys want to.
Steven, I'd like to talk to him. I mean, Jerry, maybe we can incorporate that into, we have a meeting where we talk about the...
Sure you can, um, I just have to give 48 hours notice.
What were you talking about?
About the fire truck contract, we need to sit down and talk about that, too. I mean, if we can incorporate a meeting with the EDC members and then talk about this, too, because we haven't sat down to talk about that either. Maybe we can... Try to come up with something?
Yeah.
It is a public meeting.
We'll work on getting a date.
Your file was difficult, so you let me know.
Well, Mark's getting ready to be difficult, too, because he's got softball starting, too, so... Won't just be me difficult.
You're always difficult, I'm just part-time.
Right, I'm always difficult.
Okay. We get something, okay.
We'll figure it out. I'll give you, I'll share my calendar with you or something, so you know.
Okay. Okay.
And then, of course, Connie, Connie and Julia will be...
Alright. Old business, Larry Joe and Patsy request we pay their repair bill. I just don't see how we can do that, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's good at all.
Is that a motion?
I don't, I'm not making that motion, I'm just saying, I don't, what do you think, Doc? Yeah, um, you know, what do you do? I mean, she called the repairman, we, you know, we, you gotta give Jerry time to get out there. Was it frozen on our side or their side? It was in the fifth. On both sides. And they called the repairman before you got there. Yeah, they come out after.
Did he do anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
She said he'd done some stuff in the house, remember with the washer and dryer, or the washer?
Well, maybe that's what the, maybe that's what the $150 is for. Because I'm sure if he pulled out there and seen Jerry...
Normally...
Normally, what we do, when we get notified, we go to the check the pit first thing. Of course, I wasn't aware of it, I was out of the office at the time, and when we come back in, we heard they had problems, so we ran out there. And, uh, it was cold enough out that day, you couldn't, you couldn't run a torch or anything in the pit, so. I just got the heat lamp, my truck's got an inverter on it, so I just backed the truck up there and let it run for an hour, plugged the heat lamp in, showed some insulation over it. And, uh, of course, while we was there, uh, the contractor showed up, told us that, uh, he was checking the house, I said, well, it's how it here works out, so. We, uh, got it thawed out within about an hour, I just let it run for a while out there with the heat lamp and put a new meter in, and it was good to go. And then I walked up to the house and called, did make sure that it's all right, and everything is all right, so. So I don't know, you know, we never told them to call the.
I'll make a motion that we forego paying the bill until they can, you know, if they come to us and show us that it was up, by, you know, I'll make a motion that we can put in the bill, sorry.
Second. I think, second.
I think I agree.
I think it just opened up a whole can of.
Yeah, I mean, have patience, you know, we can.
Because, I mean, if someone calls a contractor and all of a sudden. I'm sympathetic with them.
Yeah, I do too. It was, that was a bad week. Uh, Main Street Drive, green blocked, I think that's being blocked.
Yeah.
Due to parking.
Accident and salt. I've been told not to worry about that.
She parked around, yeah, but that's been solved.
What's that?
She's on.
That's what she told me last night, she's got to take care of it, so.
How's that fix your problem?
Well, she don't know.
Who cares? Don't care about. Uh, park property, we still don't know anything about that, right, man, the park?
Uh, just what I gave you, what is written in my.
You gave me, told me nothing.
Summary, nothing, because I got nothing.
Right, I got three pages of nothing, though.
And, and I want to tell you, Tanya spent a long time with me, and there was another man there, and we all talked about it, and it came to the conclusion that nobody knows, nobody has the answer, so. That's what I gave you, but there, and, you know, we need to survey, okay, why don't we go and survey, but, I mean, yeah, probably that's right, but, and somebody said, well, nobody owns it, yes, somebody owns it, somebody owns it somewhere.
Somebody somewhere.
Somebody owns it somewhere, so, but anyway, that's, that's my memo that I write, gave you, and I gave Pat the, uh, all the vegan, all the vegan things there, go look at it, tell me what you want to do.
And.
That takes care of that.
And Deb has.
Yeah, she has her deed, she's gonna, she's gonna make a photocopy and give it to me.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, you can go to the county recorder's office and search that deed, the property, it's there.
I'm, I'm not sure that's going to answer what you wanted.
Right.
What the answer you wanted, but I haven't.
I had to look it up, I had to look it up for when the school refused to pay for mowing, when John Williams was here. It's in the recorder's office.
When you looked it up, did it show that the front section was township or the front section was town?
I had to spend fifteen years' millions to look it up. I remember fifteen rounds, it's unchanged.
We need to look it up, make sure.
It's clear as mud.
Yep.
But it's, um, we need someone that knows, um, doing a search, so they can do a pre-quick. If my mom was healthy, she would find it.
Right.
She can't do it now, though.
Okay.
Okay. Well, what you got, what you?
Uh, this is, under you guys, this is the, um, paint, you put it in there?
What's your quote?
I haven't got it yet, yeah, I'm working on it. Nothing in adjustments, nothing in discharges, nothing. Any public comments? Public, not much public here. All right, fire truck and fire contract discussion. We're trying to get a meeting together, we can take care of that. EDC contract. Put that on hold too. Uh, got a bid for the community building painting, to prep, paint the floor, the two-part epoxy, fix the cracks, paint the walls in the eggshell finish gray, match length, the building out here. Uh, come in at seven thousand dollars from, uh.
Seven even?
Seven even. Said that's to prep, paint the floor, fix the cracks, two-part epoxy, and paint all the walls, eggshell gray.
I have no clue if that's a good deal or not.
I don't, I know that a floor paint's expensive, I mean, under that. And I'm not sure if you did it when they.
What did Smith come out?
I don't remember, that's been a couple years ago now. The only thing, my personal thought would be, if you were painted the same color that it is now or something very similar, if you, something's missed, it's not going to show up.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be close to some color, the walls are coming in gray, not yellow.
Do I make a kind of work in that?
Well, but they got the LED light, it would look like this, it's like a light gray, like, like, it's gonna basically look, the colors he showed would look like the outside of the community building. I mean, we can pick whatever color we want, that's just what he said, gray, I mean, the color's not going to make a difference on the price. We can sit down and pick, I'm the last man in the world to talk about colors. No. I'm just tempting, this is what the color says, because he, he meant something to where it would look kind of like the outside, the dark gray with the light gray. He talked about painting the floor dark gray, and then the white gray of, of bright white gray, like this.
Can I see professional color?
Yeah. I said, well, I don't know about the colors, so just leave me out of colors. Well, I'll, I'll leave it to Matt either way.
Because he got, he bonded, got.
Right, we have insurance, bonded insurance and stuff like that, but, um, I'm not going to be trying to get the colors.
How many days, how many days would he, did he give an approximate time, or?
He said it would take just three or four days to get it all done. I said, well, does it have to be in the summertime to bend, he said it's not that bad of an order, it wouldn't be that bad, it wouldn't be something that had to wait.
Does that do anything in the kitchen too, or is that outside of the kitchen there?
I think I just, we just talked about the floor, I don't think we talked about kitchen. But I can check when, when we talk color, because somebody's going to have to be nominated to pick colors, because it's not going to be me. What's your thought, Amy?
I don't know. Want Smithy to bid it, give another bid, I don't know. Uh, uh, all I'm saying is, I got a price for getters for this building. The prices are from six, twenty-six thousand five hundred to sixty-eight hundred is the range on prices to put getters on this building. So I'm just all.
Twenty-six grand worth of walk.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so. I mean, seven grand don't sound, don't sound bad. I mean, you know.
So, that's what we got for the bid for the paintings.
Who, who, who is it?
Wesley the Wright Painters out of Lotus Park.
Is Smithy still a painter? I don't know. Or if we have any other local painters, I don't know if we have anybody else.
I think so. Because we were talking about more than, um, building, uh, hotel, uh.
So, that's what we got now, so that's where we stand.
I'll make a motion, we table it until we find out if there's someone who could be affected.
Okay.
I just think it's, it's good business if we have at least two people.
I agree a hundred percent.
But I would not share what that guy's bid is.
I know.
Sixty-nine-ten.
Well, and the reason is that there's so many different prices on paint.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because that's Sherman Williams paint, yeah.
Yeah, we need apples to apples, we should have some kind of spec.
Yeah, it's not, it's not Walmart paint there, that's Sherman Williams paint.
I know, but they don't, those people don't watch that channel.
I can't get that channel.
I can't get it.
It's on the Towns Web page.
Oh. Well, I've been on three and a half years and I mustn't.
Okay. All right, we've got the spring cleanup, is there something you want to say?
One more thing, you wanted, uh, the signature page on the shooting range contract with the local units, with your name and Joe's name, so this is putting your name as on it. And then I'll make copies and send it out to the other agents.
It'll be dated too, I guess.
What if, no, I won't do it.
Well, then tomorrow will be today.
No, tomorrow you'll have to change everything.
Yeah.
It's one of the, thirteen.
Thirteen. Are you dead?
No, um, but I can show who's going to go from here.
Oh, hell. The hazard, wait for, oh, Vanessa? I'll be in Alabama that week, I know I won't be in, oh, April fourth, April third. I'll be in Alabama, so I, that won't be me. Uh, this line decides we got spring cleanup, it'll be Saturday, April twenty-seventh. Make sure to put that out. Facebook page too. Uh, Carroll County Chamber will host the state, city, county, town luncheon, April fourth, Canal Center, same day, I will be uptown.
It's always nice to have somebody from the town speak at that. Who thinks we can come?
I, I'll be, uh, I'll be in Alabama, so.
Do you want to go, Mark?
I'll be, if you can, that'd be great. I'll be working.
When was it planned out there?
Twenty-seven.
April twenty-seventh.
And it is a Saturday.
Last Saturday of the month.
All day.
Oh, all day, till midnight.
What do they request, um, when the items be sent out the night before, or?
Yeah.
We do have it posted around town, what they will not take, so there's notices.
But they ask that they put stuff out early, right?
Because they only go by once.
Yeah, but they don't go back.
Right, okay.
Well, if there's a list of what they won't take and will take, right?
Yeah.
It's posted on the bulletin board, there's copies in the office, it's also at the post office, I think, over here.
And we were, looked into having an e-waste recycler come into town or the county to take e-waste.
No, because they come in to floor.
They do come in to take e-waste, or it's just hazardous waste?
You're right, it is hazardous.
Yeah, I'm talking about e-waste, like old computers or TV, because we always have a lot of TVs set out here, Jerry or somebody has to pick up.
Yeah.
Don't take them out there to.
We, we just take them to the land, we just pick them up, take them out to land, or to transfer.
And do we have to pay to get rid of them now, or?
We haven't so far, now, if we get to, I suppose.
But I thought they made some different.
I suppose I, I suppose I'll stop and check and see, but.
You know Josh, if they try.
I think they did say they know more TVs. Uh, but, uh, we talked to, is it curb seed, not curb seed, we're on Northwest Solid Waste District, and they do have some kind of, uh, e-waste program, uh, we haven't subscribed to it, but I can get some information for you guys on that.
But in the past, we have picked up the TVs and, uh, like computers, computers, bombers, stuff like that, and they've always took them and not said anything.
Not anymore.
Yeah, I think there's been some changes, but we'll see.
Okay.
All right, I'll have anything else? Anybody?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I can always stop somebody, time to check, see if there's a fee.
Yeah, we probably ought to check just so we don't get hit with a big bill.
Stuck with it.
Take a bunch of TV.
It depends on, it depends on what the markets are, but there is e-waste recyclers will come here to Camden, like a one-day thing. Or maybe the county, we set up the county.